Sorry, what was your name again? Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. You may proceed.
He's been incredibly helpful by kind of information and when we've had questions about and so forth, she's been wonderful. So my compliments. I had a chance to review the proposed new plans. They're not bad. We would have been next door to the apartment, the original order of the proposal one. But I have some questions and I don't know if anyone's come up or posed them to the commission. Does ZAS have sufficient funding to complete this project? We don't need another unfinished store. And that's, that's a big question. How long will the renovation take? I know they want to demo the first floor and do remodeling the second basement and make the address better and so forth. Looks great. Also landscaping would kind of block them from our view is also very appreciated. But how long will it take if they have the What will happen to the two properties that ZAS on 2413, that's me and the 4310 corner? Very plain. I know that there's been a lot of renovation and remodeling when at 2413 and the world is that it's going to be a rental property again. Those are questions that we had. And finally, I was given a copy of a letter that was sent to the Department of Commerce building zoning from legal counsel and Columbus Ice Mill representing ZAS feeling a fire code violation at 4316. In the letter, the individual writing that stated that in December 2024, ZAS and the application process, which was the result in a special permit use, puts a status that does, we're talking about some a congregation that still does not have a special permit use this move. Is the process coming along, moving along as they had special use permit at the time of renovations? About the past six years, there was no special use or any kind of consideration. Those are my questions and if any of the mission members have any answers and looking specifically at the mayor regarding the status of the special use permit and any other information he may have happening with this particular project.
I'm sorry, are you referring to this project now or another project? Because this is the hearing for the special use permit on this project.
It's been December 2024, which is first estimated special use permit.
Right, yeah, I mean, this, this is a continuation of that effort. And we're here in a quasi judicial hearing under under the codified ordinances of University Heights 1274 for considering a special use permit based upon the testimony we hear today, provisions of that codified ordinance section together with all applicable law. So, so I think it's they are operating without a special permit. I would also add that our building department, I don't have the date of the letter, but our building department did issue a 30 day notice over the summer where they were to come into compliance or cease operations within 30 days. And they did file, I understand, a timely appeal to the Ohio Board of Building Appeals. Yes, thank you. And, and I believe based upon that appeal, they are permitted to continue operation pending the outcome of that appeal. And that's not a determination the city made. I believe that's per the Ohio Board of Building Appeals. So my understanding is ZAS is in operation as of now pending the outcome of that appeal. That's on a separate track from the application here that we're hearing today about a special use permit. Does that answer your questions? I hope that clarifies for you and for everyone here. This, the status here. And I know that, you know, we have a, an email from a member of the public who could not be here that I will get to that also has some questions about that, but I want to hear from the people that are here in the room first before I go to that. Thank you. Ma'am, you may go ahead. And yes, you, and if you would state your name and address for the record and then Mr. Brian will do an affirmation.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury? Thank you.
Could you state your name, please? Thank you. Thank you. Sir, you may come up. That sounded like Siri when I said that, didn't it? Okay, sorry about that, Siri. Now, sir, if you would.
South Bellville Boulevard, my house backs onto the Garrity parking lot and then I pop into University Parkway. My family and I, we moved to America and specifically to University Heights in the middle of COVID. As you can imagine, as a new immigrant, not being able to meet people, it was quite a difficult period. And people even had even warned us, probably from an Orthodox Jew, better not to live on South Bellville. The community wasn't really in that direction. They're closer to Green Road, but thank God I have a large family. I needed a larger house. That was, that was a great house for us. Anyway, as soon as the state deemed it safe to open, ZAS reopened. And I have to say, my family and myself, we immediately felt at home in the shore. Since coming here in the middle of COVID, we've celebrated two of our sons, our mitzvahs, we've had a new baby. The members of the shore congregation have helped, my children have been on well. Most of all, my friends helped me through the arduous process of becoming a citizen of this great country, which I achieved a few weeks ago and which we celebrated together.
Congratulations, sir.
Coming from a country where I felt increasingly like my religious and social liberties were being eroded, I know more than most the importance of local religious institutions to maintain the principles I think we all hold most dear. And on a practical level, having to walk the shores on Green Road can be very difficult in the oppressive heat of the summer and the the even more oppressive snow of the winter there in Cleveland. And I also appreciate having a shore very close to my house and I'm able to send my young children to shore with me, without me, and it's safe. And going half a mile, whatever it is, up to Green Road, I feel much less comfortable. I trust that the city will do all within its power to allow the shore to both continue and thrive. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Sir, you may come up.
Swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury? Thank you.
My name is Jeffery Socklov. And I mentioned I'm there. I'm one of those very many and it's like Mr. Beck that I can be able to talk over the the shore. And I really, not only as I'm at five p.m. morning, I go pick up one book that I learned and the five inches of snow out there, I think I wouldn't have that people there. Also in my considerations of where, where, where I should go as my family fingered my it's much easier for me to have my hand cross and
Thank you. Sir.
Swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury? Yes, thank you.
I'm not a real school, but I want to address some of the issues, which is so I'm going to pass out that I The other thing I'll say is for me, it's a big quality of life. There's a lot of talk on the University Heights, football city. So, and I have to be at school in 15 minutes. I could drive to my school and park the way on Summerfield, probably down, or I could drive to a different place, park in Washington. I could, you know, I could drive or I could just walk. There's something nice about not having to get in my car, just being able to walk. Again, I'm not a member. I don't go there on the Sabbath. But to have something where I could just get the car to get out. And also just I don't want this conception of living on a neighborhood with free parking because sure to Friday night, there's high school football. So the parking spots on my street are all taken. House. Saturday, there's college football, no parking spots. Summer, there's summer league baseball, no parking spots. Sometimes moving fashion, parking spot. Thursday, no parking spots. It's not because of that true. And place Friday night, marching bands. On Saturday, speakers. Monday through Thursday, there's there's baseball games, whatever it is. So just context of the neighborhood. No parking, not because of the shore. There's noise, not because of the shore. It's an added quality of life for those who use it. I don't see it.
Thank you, sir.
Swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury? Thank you.
So I'd like to, I have a mayor, Ginsberg. Just across the street by New West Wing. Just I'd like to say I definitely said before, it's far and there are various honor and neighbor that may be very unique. Great place to live, definitely true, though. Different just in the community, the community, the communities, they these, you know, all kinds of different players in the community. Thank God we'll all have the discussions and definitely appreciate the our things. That being said, I would say I'm also not a member of ZAS. I am an that's how we were in front, the commission and everything and with that path. And I would say also it's our convenience. Having an option that whether it is across the street from me. Certain step adds to the community. I think my parents pray there and other moms does. Definitely a value add to the levels that being set as a neighbor. That a fundamentally a picture of the neighborhood. Of the massive infrastructure. If anything, we asked me. Plus enthusiasm compared to that being said, imperativeness. Value is definitely part of people. Just concerning about, again, your happenstance, you have zoning actual land, actual commercial turn out giving the home and fully having a place off the stuff. It sounded like to me it was just being a server. Favor of itself. Zoning perspective. Something be not increase a large type building, but also as a resident, they should be built solid, whether it's basic current structure like members. Catch.
Rock.
Well, Mr. Rock, I'm sorry, your description's like that, I guess. But, you know, making building on that corner. In, in, certainly books that have a feel of the neighborhood is definitely something that has the journey of presidency. And part is what it is. I think I definitely agree. At a premium bottom of God, that people, driveway, big people should use a driveway pass general. That's on part, something's at premium. But that being said, it's a great place to live. Me. I would say, yes. Variance, southern, right, they just the city can and clients, obviously, the commercial movement there, they, everybody in the just shoot around you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Ginsberg. Ma'am, you may go ahead.
Swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury?
Thank you. My name is Merrill Kaplan. I am also keeper of ZAS, chief of ZAS synagogue. And I want to thank, first of all, ZAS for listening to our comments at the last meeting where this issue was discussed. You know, we are available and welcome the opportunity to discuss anything that they're willing to discuss. Probably throughout, I didn't have a chance to stop by our house, but, you know, I just want to reaffirm that, you know, I'm not a member of the Orthodox Jewish community, but I am a member of the community as are other members within the neighborhood. That's the great thing about University Heights is that we have a variety and diversity of neighbors and different ways of living, different practices. And what is wonderful is that we're all with them. So I welcome changes that are being proposed. I think, you know, we all want it to be something that is not totally different than what's there. I think that's the concern that we have. You know, again, given what I see with the Alexander Shul, you know, I'm very disappointed that that has taken place because I think it impacts neighborhood. And it's just not, I just don't want to see that happen with ZAS. And, you know, I appreciate your consideration. I think, you know, our, we want to have a neighborhood where people are comfortable. They, you know, want a place that's close to Donovan and bring their family. That's important. But again, we want it done with the appropriateness of the building codes and appropriate for the betterment of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan. Sir.
Swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury? Thank you.
This Jeffrey Socklov. I live on the George Green Road. I am not a member of ZAS. I do not worship there.
Yes, I'm sorry. Could we, Mr. Socklov has the floor. Could we please be quiet and let him speak? Thank you.
Seeing the community change dramatically. When I was a youngster, we had worship. We had walk over to Cedar and Merrimack, right across the street where Chase Bank is. And that was a long walk, you can tell you. And as I've seen the community change, I think it's, and I said this to Mayor Perry Rothschild many, many years ago, when they were talking about what was going on with the elementary school at the end of our block. You know, seeing the children in the neighborhoods, we want young people in our neighborhoods, want to see a future in our neighborhoods. We need to do things that are going to attract families. I think as an Orthodox Jew, seeing other, seeing it grow in our community has been tremendous over the last number of years. Hopefully that comes with respect to the people that have been living here who aren't Orthodox Jews or aren't Jewish at all, that, that they continue to be comfortable in the community. I've been very impressed with what ZAS has done and of myself, availability every time I call and wanting to know what's going on, every time I got a notice. What's going on? What are we doing? How is that going to change? How's that going to impact? That comes out of something that I question, but I don't think there are positive things from the neighbors where they tried to accommodate. Maybe they haven't gotten to every single neighbor. Maybe they haven't gotten every single detail, but they've really been trying. In terms of variances, the city has granted what variances that are somewhat unbelievable to other synagogues when they wanted to do things. And so to hang our hats in terms of the, the board, I don't know if it's this board or other boards, BCA, but to hang our hat on the size of the variance, we really have to compare that to what the other variances were done for similar uses in the neighborhood. So I very much love to see ZAS be able to continue worshiping here. I think it's a great part of our community. They brought great, they're servicing a great need in our community. And there's got to be a way that work and leadership of that organization can come to a and their neighbors, their neighbors can come to a understanding of how things move forward. You sir, so I hope you will move the press and in that move to the next step of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Socklov. I see a gentleman back here. You may come up.
Swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury?
Time. I, on the other side, I see that by myself, also equally motivated to make a work and that's the beyond relationship, something beautiful to see. And just want to congratulate everybody and thank you for all the time you put into the efforts, plan after plan after plan, still going at it and, you know, with the focus of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, come on up. Thank you.
Swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury? Thank you.
And a member of ZAS. He is the bridge guy. Actually, I want to say from personal what ZAS has meant to my family. We've been here for 10 years. I believe we've been part of the synagogue since we moved here. And it's, it's more than just a place to go and pray. It has become really an extension of my family. And I believe most people who pray there feel the same way. Very close tight knit. They've come to celebrate family joyous occasions and sad occasions with me. The people that I know I can rely on to call them three o'clock in the morning. Change the light bulb. They, I've done it. I'm happy about it. See this light bulb change. They do that. We really grow together as a group and the, the make us split up and we've got this that, that the unity inside our small group at the difference is they really enjoy my times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silbert. Sir, you may come on up.
Swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury?
So what we can say before the community growing. One of my, at ZAS, main things I do there is I run the, the children programs for the children and having the children to be able to come freely on their own from their houses is a huge benefit for the children to be able to come. That helps them, they're growing in the huge age, they're growing in the community. They're joined in the community and they feel extremely connected to the, to the shore because they're able to, they have the free access to coming instead of having to get by senior parents and not looking out, they can come on their own. And that's a point to the whole community growing as a whole.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Albaum. Mr. Akin.
You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury? Thank you.
Could you state your name for the record, Phil? And do we need another microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
Down close to where the Hummer is. And I went to Zippelkai, the old Zippelkai, which was one of the first synagogues in University Heights. They renovated a, a building and, um, factor was that it could be used because it was near parking. It could be used because it was a possibly a brick dome. It could be used because there was great public access by walking. All these things are needed. By them. Haven't seen inside ZAS. I know that there's a great deal of there's a great population in that area. As, uh, as mentioned, I renovated the house on Feldbar would have been a great, great synagogue. Build a synagogue, though, you need room and you need room. Kids, too, on the outside. Need to be within walking distance. But as was said, and it's clearly things you had mentioned, me and pension, no one wants, you have to be considerate of everything around you. Which I think I, I hear very clearly is trying to be effective. Comment is this is a very, very difficult location, very small lots, houses all fucked together. Difficult one, one to figure out. And I, I know how to plan these things myself. And, um, I was thinking what options they could have. I was thinking in general, what options the city had and where to locate other synagogues. The streets would be allowable beside Warrensville and Cedar and and Green Road. It's a difficult thing, but there are lots that are huge. There are some in the city that are more receptive to this kind of activity. Not easy to find. I have, there's, I have today one on University Parkway now. Occupied by a very close friend of mine. It's difficult to resolve all of these issues. And I know barrage caught up back about a corner lot, corner lot surgery. We also have a, a building at Milton and University that is sitting there now in the middle of construction. That might be an opportunity. Some kind of joint effort. There are other spots and that's nothing to diminish anything that's been done so far. I know people like this because they want to have a good congregation. If I'm vision, I want to be close to where they are. They can walk me down a mile down Green Road. It's, uh, it's very, very cool, cold, freezing. And to have something close is great. So my only comment is that this can go on, but maybe there's better places. Maybe there are better lots. Maybe there are better, better corners. Maybe there's a better street. Maybe there are things close by and, um, I don't think this is the home place to build a shul, but maybe it will be. I don't know. I'm not trying to discourage anybody, but I'm thinking maybe better.
Thank you, Mr. Atkin. Is there any further public comment? Well, there is an email that the planning commission members received. That is on point with the application. And I will be reading it into the record now. These are the words of the email. These are not my words. So to be clear, as I read this, it may be my voice, but these are not my words. These are the words of Tina Bayer, who, um, emailed us this week and has previously emailed us on this application. So her email of, um, October 15th, 2025 reads as follows, Dear Planning Commission Members, I am writing in hopes that you will take the following into account when deciding on whether to approve ZAS's application tomorrow night. One, our opposition to the proposal has not changed. See April 30th email below. Two, I discovered after May's planning commission meeting that prior to Dr. Lewis Maltzmaaker slash ZAS purchasing the properties on University Parkway and Elmdale, ZAS Group LLC used to own the following properties in the permitted zone for houses of worship on Green Road on the block in between Zikron Chaim and the Kolel. A C attached screenshot. The properties are itemized as one, 2436 South Green Road parcel 726-26-001 owned by ZAS Group LLC from June 26, 2015 until March 29th, 2018. Number two, 2440 South Green Road parcel 721-26-005 owned by ZAS Group LLC from September 1, 2016 until March 29, 2018. The next lot was never owned by ZAS but was held by the LLC that bought the above two properties from ZAS, item three. 2456 South Green Road parcel 721-26-007 owned by ZAS Group LLC from 730, 2015 until March 29, 2018. The next house is owned by a family and the final one is owned by the Kolel. The above information was taken from the county website, myplace.kioga county.gov. My question is, why did ZAS decide to buy the houses on University Parkway beginning in 2017 when they already own three houses in the permitted zone for houses of worship on Green Road? It seems quite unneighborly for them to have operated, quote, under the radar, end quote, on University Parkway from 2018 to 2021. Intimidated neighbors, including myself, into silence after sending cheesecakes to neighbors seeming as a bribe. And since then ignored the 2021 CDO, which would appear to be an abbreviation for cease and desist order. And who knows what else has happened since then that the public doesn't know about? Aaron's, my public record request from a month ago remains unanswered. Finally, at May's planning commission meeting, Mr. Meistel stated that his two brothers-in-law live on University Parkway, 4391 and 4451. He lives on Milton opposite Churchill and his father-in-law, Dr. Maltzmaaker, lives at the other end of Churchill in the permitted zone for houses of worship on Green Road. If this is meant to be a quote-unquote family shul, why don't they meet in one of their much larger homes? Could it be because they don't want the traffic and parking issues their group has inflicted on our block for seven plus years? It remains incredibly unfair to us. In any event, I am asking you to please act tomorrow night to vote on the question and to vote no for all of the reasons I've listed here and previously. Thank you for reading. Tina Hana Bayer. Then forwarded with this was the April 30th email. April 30th, 2025, and this is the previous email and it reads as follows. Dear Planning Commission Members, I would like to submit the following statement in advance of tomorrow night's May 1st, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, as I am unsure if my health will permit me to attend in person. If I do attend and am permitted to speak, I will briefly summarize these comments in order to respect the proceedings. I apologize for the length of this email, but there is much context going back to August 2018 regarding the three parcels named in agenda item 4C for tomorrow night. Application from Noam Adler seeking approval of recommendation to city council for the following. One, special use permit pursuant to chapter 1274 for the property at 4310, 4316, University Parkway and 2414 Elm Dale for a house of worship in a U1 residential zone to demo houses on all three lots, three lot consolidation of all three parcels into one parcel. First, our family is requesting that the planning commission reject slash deny the applicant's request in its entirety for the following reasons. One, to preserve the quiet residential character of our block. No business would be allowed to operate in this location. Two, the design and layout of our block as platted in the late 1950s, early 1960s was never intended to handle the traffic, parking and congestion issues we have seen since 2018. A, the cars parked on Monday mornings during trash pickup obstruct city employees' line of sight at the same time that neighborhood children are waiting for their school buses in driveways. I've spoken about this at great length at city council and safety committee meetings going back to October 2023. B, we continue to observe mid-street U-turns daily and bottlenecks occasionally. C, the driveways being closer together on the north side of University Parkway leads to rushed drivers parking carelessly and blocking residents' driveways. D, it seems that we have been targeted for my speaking out at city council meetings. Since November 2023, our driveway has been partially blocked at least three times on Thursday nights by the same car. See Officer Riley's body cam footage from December 12, 2024. Three, the housing stock in the city continues to decline, especially for first-time home buyers with multiple houses being knocked down and replaced by institutions and/or parking lots. JCU plans to knock down 11 to 12 houses at Warrensville Center Road in Fairmount for a parking lot. Four, to strengthen the precedent, other congregations have successfully established and abiding by city ordinances within permitted existing zoning. A, the Kolel at South Green and East Carroll. B, Zikron Chaim on South Green between East Carroll and University Parkway. And C, Haikal Haktora at South Green and University Parkway. Five, there are many residents of the neighborhood who oppose these plans but are afraid to speak out. Six, none of the houses listed in this application are owner occupied. We live diagonally across the street northwest of the site. We closed on our house on May 4, 2018, moved in stages and were finished moving in by June 26, 2018. A little over a month ago, in early August 2018, excuse me, a little over a month later, in early August 2018, we began to notice every morning and evening the presence of many cars parked in the driveway at 4316 University Parkway. I finally asked a neighbor if they knew what was going on. I was told that, quote, everyone knew, end quote, there was a synagogue meeting there that had previously met at South Green Road and Churchill and that, quote, everyone had seen, end quote, the construction that had gone on for months before then, but after the current owner of 4316 purchased it in December 2017. We had missed the construction due to having just purchased the house and had no idea what was pending. Our intention had been to buy a house with space for a disabled elderly family member to live with us on a quiet block tucked away from the main roads. Eventually, the number of cars parked on the street increased to the point of annoyance and then COVID hit in spring of 2020. The lack of cars parked on our street during the lockdowns was one upside to the entire stressful time. By then, an entity controlled by the owner of 4316, ZAS LLC, had also purchased 4310 University Parkway on the corner and 2414 Elm Dale. By spring of 2021, the traffic and parking problems were back to full strength with the added annoyances of neighbors exchanging words with attendees at 4316 because of blocked driveways and trespassing by 4316 attendees on neighbors' properties. During this time, our family was additionally in a state of stress due to my husband being assaulted by a JCU student while walking on Washington Boulevard and a JCU student lighting M80-style fireworks on the Garrity Playground behind our house on two separate Friday nights in April of 2021. We filed a report and were told by the responding UHPD officer that a JCU student had been arrested for doing the same near Jay-Zoo. Around this time, Dr. Jeffrey Eckstein spoke during the city council meeting via Zoom, during which Mayor Brennan was censured. I was surprised to hear Dr. Eckstein's comments as I was not aware that there were others on the block who had also been negatively affected, much less that there had been discussion about a cease and desist, desist order being issued. I only learned a month or two ago that the CDO was indeed issued and that it is possible that the applicants have been willfully ignoring that CDO for the last four years. Back to May of 2021, right before the Shabbos holiday, we received a delivery of a cheesecake with a note from Dr. Lewis Maltzmaaker of 4316 University Parkway, thanking us for being such good neighbors. That's in quotes. Others on the block also received this and invited us to reach out via phone or email. This was the first time we had ever heard from him. I responded by email with the details of what we had witnessed since 2018, especially the deep distress that I experienced every time I watched the trash buggy drivers driving right next to the line of Hebrew Academy Girls waiting for their school bus in the driveway for the group home next door. I had already been regularly reaching out to parents on the block and I continued to remind them at least twice a year to train their children to move to the sidewalk when they see the trash buggies. Sadly, the email exchange that followed with Dr. Maltzmaaker on May 2021 was the opposite of what we were hoping for. It contained shocking hostility, zero concern or care for the safety of or even acknowledgement of the Hebrew Academy Girls who actually live on our and surrounding blocks, a demand to meet with our rabbi, we refused, other shocking insinuations, and finally the statement, I never want to hear from you again. That's in quotes. We have complied. I did speak to Mr. McConville after that, but this is why we are uninterested in any, quote, attempts at mediation, end quote. This is also why I began attending city council and safety committee meetings in October 2023 about the traffic and parking issues on our block. Unfortunately, I have received blowback from some in the community, including a self-proclaimed board member of ZAS who attempted to bully me into silence in part because, quote, it's so much worse on their street, end quote. I strongly believe that the majority of the ZAS membership would be horrified to know about the above incidents. I am not eager to publicize them, but I'm puzzled as to why our block was picked as the future ZAS home when its members are driving in from other streets. They don't live on our block. My biggest hope is that some or any of these incidents will somehow lead to citywide improvements in safety for all our children and consistent, fair and reasonable enforcement of the city zoning ordinances. Finally, it is puzzling why Mayor Brennan has seemingly chosen not to enforce the 2021 cease and desist order for almost four years now, especially when he and then law director Luke McConville previously followed through on enforcement of temporary restraining orders on Miramar in 2021 and on Churchill in 2022. Thank you for reading. Tina Hana Bayer. I will not attempt to refute or, or comment or correct each and every part of this unworn statement. However, I do want to address the last paragraph. As it's been directed at me multiple times throughout the last four years since we issued the cease and desist order in May of 2021 as to the ZAS shul. Then it is this. In 2021, as we were coming out of the pandemic, we began some enforcement actions with regard to or resumed enforcement actions as to some of the unlicensed shuls in the city of University Heights. Alexander Scholl, for example, had been here, uh, before the planning commission in 2019, November of 2019, um, and they had abandoned the process ultimately. We had a proposed shul on Churchill where every resident on the street either signed a petition asking the city to do something or called if they had missed the actual petition signing and indicated that they supported the petition and would have signed it had they had an opportunity to sign it personally. And that did result in court action. We did have a, a matter involving a proposed shul or other planned worship, but it was but it was presented initially as a special use permit on Miramar Boulevard. There was an extensive hearing on that in March of twenty twenty one. The applicant was Danny Grand, and that application was ultimately withdrawn, leading to litigation with the city, which remains pending in the US Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. The city did prevail at the trial court level. And then finally, we had the issue regarding the ZAZ shul, which I had been asking our law director, Luke McConville, to take up for some time, mostly due to complaints that were driven from the street, most of those complaints coming from Dr. Eckstein. And Dr. Eckstein had reported to me the incidents going on across the street from his house, the problems with parking, the problems with his driveway being blocked. And I indicated to the law director that something needed to be done. But unlike the other matters, Mr. McConville did not move to write a letter. At some point, Dr. Eckstein asked me, what is it going to take? Do I need to go to city council and and express publicly this problem? And I said, well, the next city council meeting is at the beginning of May and gave him the date and said, if 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 you want to go to public forum and make your request there, that is an appropriate request in public forum. And he made public comment to that point. He asked the law director on the record whether he would in fact send out a cease and desist order, and Law Director Luke McConville indicated to the resident and publicly and for the record that yes, he would send out a cease and desist letter with regard to the ZAZ shul. I would note that up to that point, I had asked Mr. McConville several times to do this, and he had declined or somehow otherwise failed to do it. Mr. McConville did issue a cease and desist letter on May nineteenth, twenty twenty one, which was, I believe, the day of the next city council meeting. And I believe he did it on that day because he realized that Dr. Eckstein could return and ask whether it had been done, and he would then be in a position to say that he had sent a letter to Dr. Maltzmocher directing a cease and desist with regard to activities that we believed were happening on the property without a special use permit. I think it's also important to note that here in University Heights, the law director is hired and serves at the pleasure of the city council. The law director is not hired by the mayor. The law director cannot be fired by the mayor. And though the law director works for all the city, and overwhelmingly, I have appreciated in my work with Luke McConville as I also now appreciate my work with Brad Bryan. Ultimately, Mr. Bryan was not my hire, Mr. McConville was not my hire. And if I had a difficulty or a problem with either of them, I was in no position to fire either one of them. That is ultimately the call of the city council. That was something that was taken up by the Charter Review Commission that recommended that that be changed so that the law director be an appointment of the mayor approved by council that then served at the pleasure of either the mayor or council, and that either the mayor or council could dismiss the law director. That was blocked by our city council and was not allowed to be put on the ballot in June of twenty twenty three, which was when those issues were taken up. And in when we had our charter review amendments voted on in November of twenty three, that particular one was not among them, which I think is unfortunate because in the end, it creates a problem where like this, if I tell the law director to do something, and if the city council tells the law director to do the opposite or to not do something opposite of what the mayor is asking the law director to do, it is only natural that the law director, if given that conflict, is going to listen to the entity that can fire him and serves at his and serves at their pleasure. I cannot fire the law director. So over and over, I asked Luke McConville to follow up and and to take action on this matter with ZAZ shul, and he declined to do it. And I think it's also important to note that Dr. Louis Maltzmocher is the president of the Board of Hebrew Academy and that our vice mayor is employed by Hebrew Academy, and that is a conflict of interest. And that is something that must have played in here. So that said, when we resolved the litigation with Alexander Shul, we had an opportunity to look at ZAZ and talk with representatives of ZAZ, and the administration began a conversation. Every time that we have had a special use permit that has come before this body, the Planning Commission, ultimately, if they completed the process, we would find a way to get to a yes. And in fact, I have voted yes on every special use permit for a religious applicant since I've been mayor. That is, if they finish the process and once we have found common ground to do something that we could work on together that would be beneficial for the community. And I believe, by the way, that we can still find that here on this application. But that said, you know, we ended up in litigation with Alexander Shul because they abandoned the process and wouldn't come back to the table. Once ZAZ came to the table, I wanted to work with ZAZ. I wanted to work with Dr. Maltzmocher, not because he had a relationship with Michelle Weiss, but because it was good for the community and because we knew there was interest by the congregants who go to the ZAZ shul that we find a way to make this work. And I wanted to find a way to legitimize operations of ZAZ, much as we had endeavored to find a way with Alexander Shul. And I know that we have an abandoned job site over there right now, and that's a separate matter for separate discussion. So I don't want to get lost in the weeds on that. But when it comes to this, and in fairness to, you know, the person who has been complaining for some time as to why it is that I seem to be treating ZAZ differently, it's not a matter of favoritism. Quite the opposite, it's a matter of the fact that once ZAZ came to the table and and ZAZ was engaged with the administration in trying to find a way to legitimize its operations, whether it was by building a new and separate structure as we saw in the application from May of this year or whether it's based upon the application that we see here today, where where they would take an existing residential structure and modify it and then seek a special use permit and have us approve a plan with respect to that. You know, we need to take into account twelve seventy-four and the provisions in there. We want to be mindful of federal law, our LUPA. We want to be mindful of of zoning code in general. We want to be mindful of the state building code. And I don't mind saying, and I don't think, I think the record will bear this out, that the that when, that that this has taken a lot longer than I believe it should have. That 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 there, that when ZAZ came to us, and this was after the settlement of Alexander Shul, I think that was at the end of twenty twenty two, that we were talking about months, not years, to get to this point. And that when ZAZ finally presented in May of this year, I'd hoped to see ZAZ back in a month or two at the most. And, you know, things happen, life happens, plans happen. And and what we saw from last May to today is is a significant change from what was presented previously. But but I think the I think the thing that 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 I I want to make sure that we emphasize here is that I want to be clear with respect to any perception by the public that I have not been diligent or that I have treated ZAZ differently or better than we treated Heiko Hakadash or we treated Alexander Shul. The difference here is that when they, whenever they came back to the table and agreed to work with us, we found a way to work. And, you know, we saw that when Heiko acquired the land that used to be Jeffrey Friedman's house, acquired that building, very different structure, of course. And we were able to work something out there where ultimately we got to a yes on a special use permit. You know, that worked with Zikraheim when they came to us with their desire to assemble land and build the temple that they have now on South Green Road. And and, you know, that also was, you know, as a matter of good faith, what we tried to do with Alexander Shul. And even though they have missed their deadline to get a certificate of occupancy on that particular building, and this is a matter under legal review now, without getting too far into that, the point is, is that we all had very good intentions about trying to make that work with them. So I appreciate the fact that the applicant is here. I do have some reservations about this application. I have heard from many of you about this application. Obviously, we've all heard that here tonight. And and with that, I'd like to turn back to the panel here. We've all heard from our constituents and from interested parties with respect to this application. And is there anything anyone would care to bring up with respect to the application that they'd care to go into now? Mr. Rock?
Thank you. I went into this meeting really unsure. I I understand the community need. I respect that. And after hearing the community speak in favor, it has helped. I'm still not convinced this is the right spot, and I really think we should look at exploring the corner lot, which was something that was originally part of your your previous presentation. It was three lots. I I still want to stick with one lot, but I would like to explore how that would be impacted on that corner lot as opposed to in between two houses. I I don't think the proposed parcel that you indicate here would work for me just because it is too close to those two houses in proximity. Whereas the corner lot gives you some more elbow room, some more space, and I think would help with parking. Certainly with walkability, I think would be a better fit or more acceptable to the fire department, it's closer to the extinguisher, oh, sorry, the fire hydrant here has more of a length of curb. So I think that's something I would be interested in seeing, and I know that's something that you said you would be open to investigating. So for me, that that's where I'm at. And I would actually motion that we table this presentation to see if that is something you can come up with or to provide some type of drawings on that corner, see if that's something that this body would be acceptable, accepting of.
We have a motion to table by Mr. Rock. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Before we take the vote on the motion, the motions table generally are not debatable, but I want to make sure we include all the instructions we may be looking for on a motion to table. So, Mr. Rock, you were describing that we you want to see something involving the corner.
Which is forty-three ten University Parkway owned by ZAZ Group LLC. I would like to see a proposal of a shul consistent with what was presented on that lot.
Is there an instruction that it be a new building or the existing build, or we leave that to the applicant?
That's up to the applicant, yeah.
Leave it to the applicant, okay. And then are there any other things that we might want to add to the motion that we want them to look at and bring back to this body at this juncture?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Bartley?
They simply they would have to update their permit application with the correct information, ownership, address, parcel.
All right, update the permit application, parcel number. Mr. Casey?
I'd just like to add, if if it's at the corner and we're going to reuse a building or if it's on the current site, I'd like to know more about the structure itself. And if we're going to have that type of occupancy of two hundred plus, that the structure can be redesigned to hold that type of load safely.
Okay, okay. Right, and then and then I I do have something, you know, I want to point out, you know, from twelve seventy-four, that 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 especially, it says, and I I will read this, "A special use permit may be issued by the Planning Commission for land fronting other streets, meaning streets other than Green Road, Miramar, a few others." Actually, it's not Miramar, Green Road, Cedar Road, Fairmount, et cetera, "where the applicant demonstrates by clear and convincing evidence that the use will benefit and not impair surrounding property values or uses, vehicular parking and pedestrian congestion or traffic conditions, noise pollution, and will not be otherwise contrary to the public safety, public health, safety or welfare subject to the approval of a majority of council." I note that we didn't, we do not have a traffic study. I think, given the standard, a traffic study would be appropriate, whether we're talking the corner, whether we're talking forty-three sixteen. And I would urge that the applicant look at this section of twelve seventy-four point oh two and make sure that they are bringing to the Planning Commission everything that we ought to consider with regard to those particular factors, especially considering that it is that this proposal is on University Parkway, whichever parcel those two parcels are in, University Parkway is not one of the streets listed in this particular provision. So I would ask that we also include that as part of the instructions. And if there's nothing further, Mr. Rock, would you agree to amend the motion to include the things that Mr. Bartley, Mr. Casey, and I have said?
I'll amend my motion.
Thank you. And with that, did we have a second? I'll second it, I'm all right. Okay. Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Oh.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes. Okay, the matter is tabled. And with those instructions, yes, Mr. Meister?
Yeah.
Well, we we appreciate your desire to do that. And I want to believe that you will do that. I I know this has taken longer than we had hoped. I I had hoped to have had this all, you know, tied up well before now for the benefit of the community, for your benefit, benefit of the congregation. But that said, I mean, I think you've heard some instructions. I'd ask that you continue to work with our building department. And, you know, we obviously also have, you know, an appeal that's pending at the Ohio Board of Building Appeals, which kind of puts a clock on this as well because whether you, because if you don't prevail on that appeal, you're not going to be able to operate. So you are on the clock when it comes to that. I I don't mind saying that, and I think that it would behoove you then to make whatever proposal you would have next fairly quickly. Because I know they've continued that matter once already, I don't know that they will continue it again. Yes, would be the first Thursday of December. I don't I don't have that date in front of me. Yeah, I I mean, we're we're already in the middle of long term. What is?
December fourth would be the Planning Commission.
Wow, okay. Well. Well, you know, love to have you back on the fourth if we're ready. I don't know if, how the BBA in Columbus will treat this matter with regard to the fifth. You know, I'm You know, I'm not adverse to having a special meeting if you're ready to go sooner, if that helps expedite this matter. I know that there's a lot for you to look at.
Once again. So this matter, what the planning commission is going to actually file as obviously wants to see dimensions, the physical layout of what it's going to footprints can be extended. There's a level that can be degressed, there is different levels of what can be done on a period, period level. Yet have the technical architectural measurements they submitted a few days prior to November date. It is probably not real.
Well, no, I mean, it's already October sixteenth. You know, we're having this meeting two weeks later than we otherwise might because of the holidays. And, you know, that's just the reality of the calendar and where we are. I don't expect that you would be back here in November. I don't know, anybody does.
I can potentially, I'd have to see somebody, depends on the depth of what's being I mean, site plan would be easier, obviously, obviously, the physical footprint of or footprints. I'm not sure I can address, it's going to be a renovation, I'm not trying to address, I called it.
Mr. Casey?
If it's going to be a renovation, then I can't, I think that's one of the conversations we have, drawings for that part model.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm just trying to clarify your instructions here because we have tabled the matter. So I don't want to get too far flung here and continue to discuss the matter when we're but I also want to make sure that you have clarity as to what you're to do here.
I guess my question is, there's a hearing on the fifth of December. Does it matter or why would it matter if it does, if this planning commission would meet before or after that hearing? What?
It would only matter if somehow we reached a decision that somehow mooted what's happening at the BBA, which I don't know that it would. And I haven't analyzed that. I don't know if you have, Mr. Brian, and I don't know that I can put you on the spot to answer that at this point. Because what is pending for the BBA is not based on twelve seventy four, it's based upon Ohio building code.
And what was appealed is
for the existing structure. Right.
And it's an appeal that to hear, you know, your hardship, you know, where you can ask for additional time from that board to, or you can ask for relief, you know, that you don't agree with the violation. I mean, it's not going to stop, I mean, if this Right, that's about your current activity.
That's why the eight so
Right.
Anywhere else?
And it's specifically regarding you using the property illegally right now in regards to the state of Ohio. So that appeal, that's what they're hearing. So if, you know, that goes to that hearing and they uphold I don't That would be their argument at that December fifth appeal, that, you know.
And I would also argue now knowing that a future planning commission date may not matter to this December fifth hearing. I'll be very frank that I don't think it's realistic. You'll have your stuff in for a December fifth meeting. It's just, I don't see that working. So that's why I want to make sure we're not slowing down your process. You have a hearing on the fifth. I don't want to interfere with that in any way. I'm not stamping these drawings, so I don't carry that liability, but I do have a moral standard to ensure it's safe. And so when Mr. Casey wants additional drawings to at least give us that, you know, satisfaction that we understand it'll be safe, of course, it's going to go through building review process to get a building permit. And that helped alleviate some of my concerns. This particular site wasn't going to work for me. The corner site will. I think I'd rather, for me personally, I'd rather you spend the time, you know, developing that site and not rushing it to a December fourth meeting. Because I don't think it's realistic.
I mean, and the other thing that I think needs to be brought up and, you know, consistent with what Mr. Casey's saying, what Mr. Rock is saying, is that, you know, the planning commission needs to know sufficiently, you know, what you're intending to do so that we can decide issues such as bond and an amount of bond. And if we don't know what the scope of construction potentially is or have any idea of what will need to be done to modify the structure, it's hard to do that. Now, with Alexander Shul, there was originally a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond. That ended up being altered later, but nevertheless, there was still bonded security that were put up that were commensurate to the amount of work and risk that was being undertaken. So we need to have an idea of that so that we can meaningfully come up with a number that isn't unduly burdensome but protects the interests of the community. So these are things that do need to come up and do need to be discussed and hashed out in some way.
So do we want to make it clear?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I want to be clear here that the burden is on the applicant to make these showings, you know. And when you say what you've been asked to submit, what you're being asked to submit isn't just whatever Mr. Bartley tells you. It's also what the code says and what the law says. So you do have an obligation to make sure that you are submitting something that is consistent with twelve seventy four and all other applicable law. Yeah, okay.
And this could take a couple of meetings. I mean, so there will be still time if something is missing.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, you're going to have to decide how you're going to address when you get back to us vis a vis preparing for the hearing presently scheduled for the fifth of December in Columbus. So we've had a motion, we've had a ruling, the matter is tabled.
A motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. I will second. Will you call the roll? Yes.
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes, we are adjourned, ten twelve P M. Thank you.